Massachusetts, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either Constable of the Town of Milford and said county greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth aforesaid, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Milford, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet in the upper hall of the Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, on the 21st day of October, 2013 A.D., at 7:30 P.M. and then and there to act upon the following articles. Article one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from...
Motion made in second. We dispense with the reading of the articles. Does any voter care to be heard on the motion to dispense with the reading of the articles? If not, question comes upon the motion. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. The clerk will now read the officer's return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Mass., date September 27th, 2013. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified the inhabitants of the Town of Milford to meet at the time and place for the purpose within mentioned by posting attested copies of the warrant in ten or more public places in Milford. Thomas Olafman, Police Chief.
The Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Shane has requested time to address the meeting. Mr. Shane.
Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. Have a short report tonight since...
Talk into the mic.
I am talking into the mic. Oh, it's hot. On testing, testing, testing. It is what it is, guys. This goes along with the other technology that we don't have. I just have a short report tonight. I'd just like to report on...
Man here.
Sorry. Anybody? All right. Since we are all in favor of the technology article that's on the warrant tonight, I'd like to report on a couple of items. Fiscal 13 results, certified free cash, which is what we call the excess and deficiency account, a little over two and a half million dollars. We had an available levy capacity going into this town meeting of about 4.4 million dollars. You'll be asked to vote and hopefully approve taxpayer relief of a million dollars, funding requests for capital and other items of about 1.8 million, which the Finance Committee Subcommittee on Short Term Capital has vetted, which I'm sure you all saw on TV. Pay off the snow and ice deficit of 254,000, transfer a million to the stabilization account, which is the long-term debt stabilization account of a million dollars, and transfer 1.55 million to the short-term capital account. We do all of that, that'll leave about 1.5 million in free cash and a levy capacity going into next year of 20,000. Finance Committee will continue its conservative budget management, will continue to reduce the long-term debt, allowing for the schools to come on in about two years, will maintain the increased funding for infrastructure to the Highway Department, will continue to increase the stabilization account to help pay for that school, will continue to increase funds to the short-term stabilization fund to cover capital. Five-year capital plan calls for an average of about $2 million a year in capital items. Fire chief wants a million-dollar truck and there's a field on there. The Youth Commission is looking to upgrade the youth center. So instead of putting money into each article for those, last year we decided that everything will go into one account, we'll draw out of that account and this body will get to vote on that. And then we'll continue to apply money to the tax rate. It's a short report. The full report is on the website. If you guys could look at it, it'd be great. Thank you.
I'll now recognize Mr. Chaky, Chairman of the School Building Committee, for a report. Want to switch microphones there? Do we have another microphone?
No, if you pull that one directly in front of you, it supposedly will work. You need it right close to you.
Can you hear that?
No. Here, you go. Aldo. This is gonna be a lot of fun tonight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Aldo Chaky. I'm Chairman of the Building Committee, also a member of the Finance Committee, and I'm a member from Precinct Five. What I'd like to do this evening is give you an update as to just where the feasibility study that was voted in to determine the location and the need thereof of our school at the elementary level, where we are at this point in time. At this point, we've been working for approximately nine months, putting together documents for MSBA, which is the Massachusetts School Building Authority, who essentially tells us if you can move forward or you cannot move forward. And we're at a point in time now where we've visited with them, we've done a site selection, we had to fire them, tell them why a particular site was selected over another. We selected the present site, the Woodland School Site, for any number of reasons, not the least of which is all the utilities we're going to need for that particular project are onsite, and it is about a 22-acre facility or a lot, so that it will accommodate a new facility. The rehab versus renovation versus the addition was not a chosen procedure or process. We decided because of a cost factor, it was less expensive to build a new building than try to rehab and add on to the existing building. At this point, documents have gone to MSBA with regards to site selection. Early in the summer, we submitted a sketch, not drawings, simply a rendition of what we are attempting to do to MSBA for their approval, and we had to put a cost figure on that particular step. And some of you may, hopefully you all have had the opportunity to not be shocked, but the figure was $60 million at that point in time. Now, right now, we completed that process. MSBA has given us the authority, they voted on the 2nd of October, to allow us to enter a very critical phase of this project, which is the design selection, the schematics. Now, when we do the schematics, we're going to actually have a building design, it'll be materials, it'll be actual numbers, it'll be numbers that will give us an accurate cost factor as well as site development. That, once again, must be vetted by MSBA, and that will all go to MSBA sometime in mid to late December. Assuming MSBA agrees with the numbers and the design, they will give us the authority to move forward, whereupon we will then, once we receive that authority, have 120 days to come before this body with our proposal for your acceptance of that particular proposal. We have 120 days to accomplish that. Now, the design phase, the schematic phase, is very important because at this point in this particular time in the project, you have to bring your prices in line with what MSBA suggests you should do with this project. Now, what happens is there's a process called, well, essentially what we have to do is value engineering. We have to justify why this particular type of material is chosen over this one. This one may be more expensive, this one may be more expensive. What they try to do is force you, as a community, to ensure that you're getting the most you can for the dollar that's being spent and that you're not overspending. This is critical for us. We, as a town, are authorized 59.2% reimbursement rate. On its face, that sounds great. However, the state decides on your reimbursement number by a construction figure of $275 a square foot. Well, for the past three or four years, there has not been a project that has come in generally less than $330 a square foot. We can do the math, we know what we have. So the 59.2% more than likely is going to be closer to 50 to 52% once everything comes together. So it's incumbent upon the Building Committee to value engineer the project, to come on with a number in February, by the way, that's when we hope to be able to come before a town meeting in February, with a number that the town meeting can afford, that the town meeting can vote to support, and it's going to have to be in a range that is going to give us for the dollar exactly what we're hoping to put up on North Vine Street. So with that said, we're continuing to work onsite, we're continuing to work on technol... Today, the Technology Subcommittee met, the Site Subcommittee met, we've met with some of our department heads in the town, we'll meet with them again. We still have to do a plan, a review with the Planning Board, so we're still a long way from home, but we're getting closer to that particular point in time. So hopefully, if all goes well, I hope to be back here in February and ask you to approve the construction of a new elementary school. Thank you.
How about the Selectmen's, Al? We got the Selectmen have two mics over there. Do you have a mic, an extra mic? Why don't we use this one? See if this'll work over there first.
Testing, testing. Nothing. Hello?
All right. I think we're in business now, all right. And you'll have your mic over there for the Finance Committee, Al? Just a refresher for those new members, members that were elected most recently that weren't able to come to a meeting, any registered voter in the Town of Milford has a right to address the meeting. Only those elected Town Meeting Members can bring motions and amendments to motions. So as long as you have an equal right to be recognized as a registered voter, as any precinct member does. When we conduct discussions, I try to, obviously, before recognizing a person a second time, I'll try to recognize a person for the first time so that there's, everyone has a chance to speak on the motions that are before the meeting. If you're not a registered voter in the Town of Milford, you require unanimous consent of the body to address the meeting. So keep that in mind as far as any of those visitors that we have or will have in the future. What is the pleasure of meeting? Article one.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,000. Said sum to be utilized for the July 4th, 2014 celebration.
A motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,000. Said sum to be utilized for the July 4th, 2014 celebration. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Board of Selectmen supported this article, motion three to zero. Mr. Deportoloméis.
Town Meeting Members, this is something that we've done over the past many years. I think the residents enjoy it greatly. Families gather. If you go down Sumner Street, Birmingham Court, Greenleaf Terrace, all the senior citizens are outside with their families watching fireworks. So I think it's $18,000 well-spent. If you approve it again, it goes off a bid in February, and then we'll be ready for the July, next year fireworks. So hopefully, you'll approve this article. Thank you.
And does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article two. Attorney Murray.
I move that the town vote to accept as and for a public way, a private way known as Diego Drive, with a pertinent easement as described in the report of the Selectmen dated April 9th, 2013, as follows.
Motion's been made in second that we waive the reading of the legal description. If it says as it appears in the Selectmen's report, is it as it appears in the Selectmen's report, Attorney Murray?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Does any voter care to be heard in the motion to dispense with the reading? All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Does the Planning Board have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Does any voter care to be heard? Attorney Murray?
Ladies and gentlemen, the Board of Selectmen had a public hearing on April 8th, 2013, voted to lay out Diego Drive as a public way. The developer and fee holder is Joe Ferreira, President, LNF Building Corp., 31 Whitewood Road, Milford.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article three.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of $75,345. Said sum to be added to the Fire Department Personnel Services Line Item Number 220-5110. As voted under Article Four of the May 20th, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, said sum to be utilized to fund the terms of collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Milford and the Milford Permanent Firefighters Association.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $75,345. Said sum to be added to the Fire Department Personnel Services Line Item Number 220-5110 as voted under Article Four of the May 20th, 2013 Annual Town Meeting. Said sum to be utilized to fund the terms of a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Milford and the Milford Permanent Firefighters Association. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The Board of Selectmen is three, zero in support of this motion. Chairman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Members, this article funds the current collective bargaining agreement that was created between the Milford Board of Selectmen and the Milford Fire Department. I'd urge you to meet the needs of this fund by funding it in the amount of $75,345. Thank you very much.
And does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article four. Mr. Chris Foley.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $125,000. Said sum of money to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for consulting services to produce engineering, design drawings, plans, and specifications associated with the Route 16 Main Street resurfacing project from Water Street to the Hope Dale Town Line.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $125,000. Said sum of money to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for consulting services to produce engineering, design drawings, plans, and specifications associated with the Route 16 Main Street resurfacing project from Water Street to the Hope Dale Town Line. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Does any voter care to be heard? Mr. Chris Foley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Members, the project involves resurfacing of Route 16 from Water Street to the Hope Dale Town Line. The project includes 0.6 miles distance of roadway. The project will include sidewalk reconstruction, handicap accessibility, culvert repairs and related work, improvements in intersection of Route 16 and 140, which would include new lights and widening of the roadway. The project has been determined to be eligible by the Mass DOT for federal aid highway funding. The total estimated cost of the project is $2.4 million. At this time, I'm asking for 25% of the total cost of design. I ask for your approval on this article.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article five. Chairman of the Personnel Board.
Dennis Carroll, Chairman of Personnel Board. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of $4,900. Said sum to be expended by the Personnel Board to conduct a classification and compensation study of salaried and hourly-rated positions under the jurisdiction of the Personnel Board.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $4,900. Said sum to be expended by the Personnel Board to conduct a classification and compensation study of salaried and hourly-rated positions under the jurisdiction of the Personnel Board. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Does any voter care to be heard? Mr. Carroll.
This article is one that we haven't done a study in this town for 13 years, so I think it's time that we ensure that there's equity in the compensation and benefits that we're currently paying people under Article Two. I'd appreciate your voting in favor of this article.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article six.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $350,000. Said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Library Trustees to replace the roof at the Milford Town Library.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $350,000. Said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Library Trustees to replace the roof at the Milford Town Library. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Burns.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, the current roof that we have on the library is now, along with the building, coming up upon 30 years of its existence. And after 30 years, the ravages of the weather that we have been experiencing over the last few years in particular, has really taken a heavy toll on that roof. Now, throughout the course of the last few years, we've been taking a Band-Aid approach to fixing this roof, and it's not working as well as it once did. So now it is deemed appropriate to come before you and ask you for your support in fixing this roof, to give us hopefully another 30 years of this roof's existence. I hope that, you know, it's long after I'm gone that this town will need a new roof on this library. So I do indeed encourage you to vote favorably, and I do indeed thank you for all of your support for the Milford Town Library that you have shown us down through the years that I've been a Town Meeting Member and a Library Trustee. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article seven.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $200,000. Said sum to be utilized, together with sums previously appropriated, for the construction of a new restroom concession building and a softball field at the Milford High School Athletic Facilities.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $200,000. Said sum to be utilized, together with sums previously appropriated, for the construction of a new restroom concession building and softball field at the Milford High School Athletic Facilities. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Attorney Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the final piece of the project up at the high school that started in 2010. At that time, the town took steps to fully renovate the football field, track, tennis courts, softball field, along with the surrounding facilities, lights, bleachers, et cetera. The estimate at that time was $3.5 million for the entire project. After discussions with the Finance Committee, it was decided that $3 million would be requested from the Town Meeting for the football field, track, and the tennis courts. The softball field and the restroom building would be done at a later time, and that money was, in fact, appropriated, and of course, the work was done. The construction budget at the time was $2.8 million, and we received a very favorable bid of $2.4 million, resulting in a savings, that time, of about $400,000. Of that money, about 200 was poured back into the project for various upgrades, change orders, and engineering. We added inline turf to the field, which prolongs the life of the field. We added increased handicap parking, electrical conduit, which allowed the school department to place more electrical and video lines throughout the complex. The project still results in a savings of about $200,000. In October of 2011, this body appropriated $150,000, which was partial funding of a restroom building. It had to be partial at that time because we didn't know how many toilet facilities were going to be required under the state code. It's a very large number based upon the seating capacity. The committee went forward through a very long process and did obtain a variance from the state plumbing code, which said that we have to build six female toilets and four male toilets. That allowed us to spec a building. We went out to bid for this building, as well as the softball field renovations. The bid number came back at $483,000, adding soft costs of about $60,000. Less the money that we have on hand of 343 brings us to the 200 that we're requesting for this article. So I'd appreciate your support on this article. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Just a personal word, I've had an opportunity over the past summer to go up to the field and see the activity up there. It's wonderful to see all the activities that the Community Use Committee is doing together with the football, the Pony League, the softball. It's just something that we're very proud of, and my personal appreciation to Brian and his committee. Chief Olafman.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article 38 of the general bylaws entitled Sex Offender Restrictions in the following manner.
A motion's been made to dispense with the reading of the remainder of the motion, if it's exactly as appears in the warrant that we all have before us. Is it, Chief?
Yes.
It is. Any voter care to be heard in the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense with the reading. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Chief Olafman.
Mr. Moderator, Members of Town Meeting, these amendments are to the Sex Offender Bylaw that you passed at the last annual town meeting, and they were recommended by the Attorney General just to make sure that constitutionally we're within the bounds, you know, as far as being contested. So they took a look at the language, along with Town Council and myself, and these are their recommendations, just to tighten it up so that we're all okay.
Any voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article nine.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $60,000. Said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to replace the telephone system in the Milford Town Hall.
Motion made... Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $60,000, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to replace the telephone system in the Milford Town Hall. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The Board of Selectmen is three, zero, one, support. Attorney Murray.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this has been the goal of the Board of Selectmen, I think, for quite some time. It's, I guess it's something that always just kind of gets, kind of gets put on the back burner. The phones are very, very old. We've been informed that the maintenance company that we do have can no longer offer a contract because the phone system falls into the, quote, "vintage" category, close quote. Parts are no longer available, so the only commitment that we could get to service the telephone system is a best effort, time, and materials basis. So we would appreciate your support on this article.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article 10. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $2,000, said some to be utilized together with funds previously appropriated for purposes of expert and other services in relation to a rate increase or increases sought by the Milford Water Company.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $2,000, said some to be utilized together with funds previously appropriated for purposes of expert and other services in relation to a rate increase or increases sought by the Milford Water Company. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any other voter care to be heard?
Moderator.
Attorney Moody.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, this wraps up the expenses connected with the most recent water company rate case. As you know, they had sought an 83 percent increase. We were able to keep that down to a 54 percent increase. You previously appropriated about $70,000 just to allow us to pay the final bill of the consultants that we utilized fairly successfully, we believe, because we, in essence, saved with that $70,000 investment about $1,200,000 per year on the rates. So again, this finishes it off, and I urge your support. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 11. Mr. Akouti.
Mr. Moderator, Town Clerk, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of $44,000, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Park Commissioners to purchase a one-ton dump truck to replace a 25-year-old vehicle.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $44,000, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Park Commissioners to purchase a one-ton dump truck to replace a 25-year-old vehicle. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Akouti.
I'll keep it short and simple. This truck has reached the end of its useful life, so the Park Commissioners, we urge you to support this article. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 12. Mr. Moderator.
Selectman DeBartolomérez.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition a general court for the enactment of special legislation which would authorize the appointment of a town treasurer and which legislation would provide substantially as follows. An act authorizing the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Milford to appoint the town treasurer. Section one, notwithstanding the provisions of Chapter 41 of the general laws or any other general or special law to the contrary, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Milford may appoint a town treasurer for a term up to five years and further notwithstanding Sections 108(a) and 108(c) of Chapter 41 of the general laws and any bylaw adopted thereunder. Said Board of Selectmen may establish an employment contract with a town treasurer upon the same terms and conditions and subject to the same limitations as contained in Section 108n of Chapter 41 of the general laws applicable to other municipal employees as designated in that section and Section two. This act shall take effect upon its passage.
Motion made in second, the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the general court for the enactment of special legislation which would authorize the appointment of a town treasurer and which legislation would provide substantially as follows. An act authorizing the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Milford to appoint the town treasurer. Section one, notwithstanding the provisions of Chapter 41 of the general laws or any other general or special law to the contrary, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Milford may appoint a town treasurer for a term of up to five years and further, notwithstanding Sections 108(a) and 108(c) of Chapter 41 of the general laws and any bylaw adopted thereunder. Said Board of Selectmen may establish an employment contract with a town treasurer upon the same terms and conditions and subject to the same limitations as contained in Section 108n of Chapter 41 of the general laws applicable to other municipal employees as designated in that section. Section two, the act shall take effect upon its passage. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The Board of Selectmen were two to one in support. Any voter care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Selectman DeBartolomérez. Selectman DeBartolomérez.
Dear Town Meeting members, the majority of towns in Massachusetts have appointed treasurers. We've been very fortunate, the last two treasurers, the late Tony Rando and former treasurer Barbara Oja, over many years have been trained as accountants and CPAs. Barbara Oja is strongly in favor of making this position appointed. Presently, the only requirement necessary for this most important and sensitive financial position is obtaining the requisite votes in the town election. A person can be elected without any education or qualifications. The treasurer deals with all towns' investments and the handling of funds in an $84 million budget. Our treasurer invests and protects our stabilization account and other special funds totaling over $20 million. This financial position deals with highly complex and sensitive health insurance programs for our employees, active and retired, unemployment, other deliberations on serious financial and our legal concerns. This article is a major priority of the board, making this position appointed as soon as possible with your permission. The position of town treasurer is now an integral key member of the financial team that renders recommendations to all of us, including this body, on all finances and appropriations. Many residents always state that Milford's finances are in very good shape. While that is accurate, we want to make certain moving forward that the next treasurer continues to be as qualified, experienced, and financially knowledgeable as our last two dedicated professionals. We feel this is very important, and we appreciate your consideration and vote favorably in this article. Thank you.
Is any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Constantino.
Mr. Moderator, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. I feel that this should be a thing that should be voted on, not through the selectmen. Two selectmen are in favor, the other are not in favor, okay? I think we put too much power in the selectmen's hands, of two of them. And that's my vote, and I tell you to defeat this and let him run for the office. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Visconti.
My name is Mike Visconti, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Eight. Town Meeting members, the sponsors of this article would have you believe that the voters of Milford are not qualified to elect a qualified town treasurer. Yet, by their own admission, on many occasions, they have praised the work done by our past two town treasurers, both elected by the voters. I'm a little confused. Also, the gentleman behind me, considered by many, including myself, to be one of the best moderators in the state of Massachusetts, elected by the voters. Of the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, fewer than 15 percent have appointed town We can avoid favoritism and nepotism influencing the decision. Let the voters of the town decide who the town treasurer is going to be. Are the sponsors of this article suggesting to us that they themselves may have been elected because they are popular and are, and may be totally unqualified to serve? I wonder. Please vote no on this article. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Town Meeting members. As you've heard from the Finance Committee and from many others, the town is in great financial shape. It's here because of the voters of Milford. It's in this position because of the people that we put in place and the voters have put in place. I guess my first question would be, what are we fixing? If this position has done as well as it has, and I'd agree that it has done very well, and the voters have done that well in selecting the town treasurer, I would tell you to leave it in the hands of the voters. There's nothing that pretends that a political process doesn't exist with the Board of Selectmen any more than it exists by the voters of Milford. That is a political process. It's a political process whether they're appointed or whether they're elected by the voters of Milford. But I would ask you, I would ask yourselves, do you want to take this out of your hands and your neighbor's hands, and are you representing those people when we take this out of their hands? I'd urge you to defeat this article, please. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Semino.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, if I talk too loud, it's because I'm 80 and I'm getting deaf, but you can just tell me to calm down. This is a good article, and I'm going to give you the reasons why. When you, when someone comes up and tells you that you're giving them too much power, that's an appointed board that have done a hell of a job to this town. The Board of Selectmen are given a job, and you need to trust them. Too many times, and I'm telling you, 48 years of serving you people in this town, the popular person gets elected, not the one that knows everything. If you can't trust these people after the job they've done for this town, we are, if you want to check it out, the best town in the area, tax bill, tax rate, services or whatever. To turn around now and slap somebody because you don't want to appoint somebody who's done a great job with it. The town treasurer's job's not anything to fool around with. Costs you a lot of money if you get the wrong person. Trust them. They've showed us that they're pretty good at what they do. Vote for this.
Any other, any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Nero.
Ladies and gentlemen, why do we want to change this position? As I understand it, the two previous town treasurers were elected, were excellent people, very qualified. So now we want to change it. Does that make any sense to you? Perhaps you recall a couple of years ago, the youth director bringing bills to the town hall for payment, someone in the selectmen office approving those bills, someone ordering the town accountant to pay those bills without an appropriation, an illegal act. We fired the mailman, the guy that brought the bill from across the street, over here to be paid, had nothing to do with it. We fired him, not the people that authorized the expenditure because they were ordered to do it. We held nobody responsible for that act. We fired somebody. He wasn't responsible for anything except carrying the bill 100 yards across the street. The person that authorized the expenditure was never held accountable. When you want financial protection with someone handling your money, you want separation of powers. You want as many people watching each other as possible because people steal. It's within human nature. When you have the opportunity, you take it. It happens. You read it in the newspaper every day. You want as many checks and balances as possible. You don't want any centralized control where someone can order another subordinate to do something improper because they fear for their job. It is not a good thing. And very importantly, you want someone who can hold, you can hold accountable. You have a town accountant, you have members of the Finance Committee, every one of them appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And what do you get? You get 100 percent approval of every article that appears before us for the last 10 years. You guys are in private industry. When you sit down at a meeting, do you ever have unanimous consent of anything for 10 years? Hundreds of articles, hundreds of millions in dollars in expenditures? We have that centralized control. It is wrong. I urge you to maintain this as an elected position and to keep that separation of powers. And if that person fails to perform, if that person isn't qualified, you are the ones who will fire that person and not elect them the next time. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. D'Elusio.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members, I rise in support of making the town treasurer an appointed position, which I believe is long overdue. I also believe the tax collector should be changed to an appointed position, and perhaps it's time to combine both positions. But that's a debate for another day. Mr. DeBartolomérez went through the list of duties and responsibilities of the town treasurer, and all I'm going to say is, over the past 20 years, they have evolved into many other facets, as he enumerated, much more than paying our bills and investing our money in an optimal fashion. One would therefore want to make sure that a candidate for treasurer has a minimum of a bachelor's degree in business administration, finance, accounting, or related field, at least two years of responsible experience in business or financial management. It would also be desirable that he or she be Mass. Collector Treasurer Association certified, which is a three-year rigorous process, and have experience in municipal cash management. There is significant financial risk to the town when a person is placed in the treasurer's position who does not have the relevant education, skills, experience, and qualifications. We therefore, and this is repetitive, but you should hear it again, we therefore would risk via a general election the town treasurer position being filled by someone whose only qualifications are that he is 18 years old, be a registered voter of the town, be able to obtain 50 signatures to get on the ballot, be skilled at running a political campaign, but may have little or no skills and qualifications to manage the town's finances. However, if the treasurer was in an appointed position, a much stronger pool of qualified candidates for the position would come forth if they knew they would be subjected to a standard application and interview process rather than being forced to seek an election, which many qualified financial professionals aren't willing or able to do. I also do not subscribe to the notion that making the town treasurer an appointed position somehow takes power away from the electorate and erodes the democratic process. My view is that government positions that make policy decisions should be elected, and positions requiring specific skills and qualifications should be appointed. For example, we elect a Board of Selectmen, school committee, the Board of Health, the Board of Assessors, the Planning Board, and 240 Town Meeting members. Their members represent different constituencies, views, and opinions, and through deliberation and voting, make policy decisions. The treasurer clearly does not fit in that category. On the other hand, we don't elect the town administrator, superintendent of schools, and... On the other hand, we don't elect the town administrator, superintendent of schools, health agent, town accountant, building commissioner, or police and fire chiefs. These positions require professionals with specific skills and qualifications. The specific skills and qualifications required to administer the treasurer's duties and responsibilities clearly place the treasurer in this category. The elected position examples cited provide ample avenues for the electorate to express its wishes at the ballot box. Making the treasurer an appointed position does not degrade the electorate's franchise to choose its political policymakers and to hold them accountable for the appointments they make. In recent history, the selectmen, through their open and transparent appointment process, have had a good track record of hiring qualified people to run town departments. This open process does not guarantee the elimination of political favoritism, but at least it takes place amongst a field of applicants, all of whom have the skills and qualifications for the position. I have complete confidence that the selectmen will continue this open process in choosing the next town treasurer. In conclusion, I would like to leave you with a couple of facts to consider. First, in a 2010 study conducted by the National Bureau of Economic Research, found that a point of treasurer's reduce a community's cost of borrowing by thirteen to twenty-three percent over communities with elective treasurers. At our last election, we dodged a bullet. Twenty-five-hundred-and-seventy-four voters out of seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-three registered voters, a mere fifteen percent voted for treasurer. We should all be grateful that Barbara Oje, the incumbent, ran for reelection, and she won handily. However, in this environment of low voter turnout, it is very plausible that a candidate with little or no skills and qualifications can become the town treasurer. In the final analysis, the question becomes, is the electorate better served by hoping an elected candidate for treasurer with the required professional skills and qualifications would come forward and would have the ability to run a campaign? Even if such a person were to appear, at the end of the day, the treasurer would be selected by whoever garners the most votes, which is not very many, as evidenced by recent low voter turnout? Or is the electorate better served by assuring a person with the required professional skills and qualifications will be selected from a field of applicants, all of whom, by virtue of a job description and application process, would have the required professional skills and qualifications? In my view, managing the town's finances, along with all the other treasurer's duties and responsibilities, are far too varied and important to unnecessarily risk leaving the selection of treasurer to chance. For all these reasons, I strongly urge you to vote for this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Buckley.
You know, I'm not sure when we lost faith in our voters, but it seems as though many or some have. When we talk about chance, when we talk about popularity, when we talk about favoritism or any other type of political process, the voters have done a great job. And I'm still not clear on what we're fixing. If somebody could articulate to me how it is in the past number of years we've put so many qualified elected officials in place, then I would better understand this article and understand what we're attempting to fix. There are a great many positions that are elected within the town, and I don't consider myself having been elected through a popularity contest, and I see others who have not. We still have highway surveyors, an example, who's an elected position, highly qualified and capable. We have other positions that are elected. I think the voters have done a good job, and I think it's time we give them the credit that's due and say that candidates step forward, and the voters vote for those candidates based on their qualifications and experience and not just based on popularity or chance. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Precinct six, is it Mr. Soares?
I too agree that the town treasurer position is a very important position, but I would remind the members here tonight that traditionally in this country, we tend to elect important positions. The Board of Selectmen here are elected, our state representative, our state senator, our governor is elected. Even the President of the United States, probably the most important job in the whole country, is an elected position. So I think there is a reason to keep it elected, but I'd like to put this issue to bed tonight, if we could. I think a significant change like this really should be approved by the voters. You know, later this year, we will have a casino referendum that's been approved by the Board of Selectmen, will go to voters, and then come to this board. I think a significant change like this should have approval by all three bodies in the same way. I think this also sets the precedent that, you know, any elected position currently can be changed to an appointed one without any voter approval or any voter discussion other than this body here. And especially this issue, where we have a split Board of Selectmen, two-to-one, and also a split Finance Committee, I just, I don't see why this cannot go to the town ballot at the election next year. It seems that if we can wait four or five months to get to this body, to ask to make this appointed, we can wait another four months for an election. So with that, I'd like to actually make a motion to amend. There's already a process in place.
Is this, what is your, this is an amendment presented?
So the amendment is Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to have its elected town treasurer become an appointed town treasurer of the town in accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty-one of the general laws. Just to summarize, the relevance is that in Chapter forty-one, it puts the question up to voters on a ballot question to say, shall the town have its elected town treasurer become an appointed town treasurer? Yes or no? And I think if we do that, we can put this issue to bed. We won't have any future boards that, you know, our three members switch it up, and then it becomes two-one the other way. We won't see this issue again. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Can I just have a moment with Town Council?
to the motion, which is basically substituting another procedure for the appointment of a town treasurer. Chapter forty-one would allow us to go through a process of electing a town treasurer, or having an elected town treasurer become an appointed town treasurer. What the selectmen have done with this article is to ask for a special act of the legislature. So they've chosen a different approach. With, I'm going to have to rule the amendment to the motion out of order, and let's consider the motion itself. And if you're in favor of going the way suggested by Mr. Soares, then you'll defeat this, and then that option will be available. So let's continue to debate the motion as originally presented. One in the back there, is that Mr. Slazey? Tough to recognize. Oh, yeah, I don't see you walking around anymore, you know? I, one of my former students, you know?
Mr. Moderator, Amy, ladies and gentlemen, I'm a town meeting member for probably forty years, as a lot of you are long-serving also. This appears to me to be one of the simplest articles that I've seen. And unfortunately, Mr. DeLuzio, previous speaker, made many of my arguments, so I'll not repeat them. Personally, I'd rather not continue to be lucky. We have had a couple of very good, efficient, capable town treasurers, and I'd like to see that continue. I don't, I would not like to see it continue in its present state. I've always thought it should be appointed. The majority of our officials are appointed. I always put the town treasurer on the same level as a town accountant. In fact, the town treasurer's salary, I believe, is more. Our town accountant, we require he or she to have an accounting degree, eventually be certified. Eventually, many of them even follow up on that with more degrees, either masters, MBA, whatever. It's my opinion that the treasurer's position should be a position with a college degree, obviously, not preferred, but mandated. I'm sure the board will make it, not preferred, but necessary. I just can't understand how anyone would be offended by believing or having someone tell you that this is taking power away. I just don't, our budget this year's probably eighty-four million by the end of the decade, and probably sooner, it's going to be over a hundred million. Awful lot of money. It's a bonded position also. Not everybody can be bonded. We would certainly, this would certainly ensure that that individual would be able to do so. I strongly urge you to disregard any false cries relative to this position. This is key. I strongly urge you to make this an appointed position. Thank you very much.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Visconti.
My name is Mike Visconti, Precinct Eight, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Eight. One of the previous speakers spoke about our past election, at which time a gentleman placed his name on the ballot to run for town treasurer. This gentleman, for his efforts, received public ridicule from one of the sponsors of this article on the radio for being, for having the nerve to put his name on the ballot when he had no qualifications. We don't know if he had qualifications. We don't know if anybody who places their name on the ballot has qualifications. That all comes out during the campaign. We have forums to ask candidates questions. We should allow this to continue in the way that it has for the last umpteen years. We need the people of this town to elect the treasurer, and I believe the gentleman who placed his name on the ballot for treasurer on this past election is owed an apology for what was said. In any case, please vote no on this article, and let the people continue to elect the town treasurer. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Motion made, and secondly, move the question. Moving the previous question is an attempt to shut off debate, and is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of moving the question will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one.
Thirteen in favor, six opposed.
Precinct one reports thirteen in favor, six opposed. Precinct two.
Thirteen in favor, two opposed.
Precinct two reports thirteen in favor, two opposed. Precinct three.
Precinct in favor, five opposed.
Precinct three reports sixteen in favor, five opposed. Precinct four.
Eighteen in favor, two opposed.
Precinct four reports eighteen in favor, two opposed. Precinct five.
Twenty in favor, one opposed.
Precinct five reports twenty in favor, one opposed. Precinct six.
Nineteen in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct six reports nineteen in favor, zero opposed. Precinct seven.
Twenty-three in favor, one opposed.
Precinct seven reports twenty-three in favor, one opposed. Precinct eight.
Nineteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct eight reports nineteen in favor, none opposed. At large.
Ten in favor, three opposed.
At large reports ten in favor, three opposed. One hundred fifty-one having voted in the affirmative, twenty in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired to move the previous question. Question now comes upon the motion, the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for the enactment of special legislation which would authorize the appointment of a town treasurer. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
All those in favor rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct, I'm sorry, all set? Precinct one.
Eleven in favor, eight opposed.
Precinct one reports eleven in favor, eight opposed. Precinct two.
Eight in favor, nine opposed.
Precinct two reports eight in favor, nine opposed. Precinct three.
Eleven in favor, nine opposed.
Precinct four.
Eleven in favor, eight opposed.
Precinct four reports eleven in favor, eight opposed. Precinct five.
Twelve in favor, nine opposed.
Precinct five reports twelve in favor, nine opposed. Precinct six.
Eight in favor, eleven opposed.
Precinct six reports eight in favor, eleven opposed. Precinct seven.
Sixteen in favor, eight opposed.
Precinct seven reports sixteen in favor, eight opposed. Precinct eight.
Nine in favor, twenty-one opposed.
At large?
Nine in favor, one opposed.
I'm sorry, Dawn, say it one more time. Nine in favor? Why don't we do it in precinct, that precinct alone? Would you, all those in favor, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitor in precinct eight? So we get it, rather than doubting the vote. You have to doubt the vote in the precinct when it's counted. You can't doubt the vote after we've tallied all the precincts. All those opposed in precinct eight will rise and remain standing. Oh, and there's one over here, too, Dawn. Dawn? We know neither in favor. Let's find out how many are opposed in that precinct, please. Stand, all those opposed, you doubting, well, I'm sure there's a doubting of the vote in precinct.
I'm doubting, yeah, I don't.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, just precinct eight, all those in favor of the motion. All those in favor, just precinct eight, all those in favor of the motion, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Twelve in favor. What is your point of order, Michael? Well, you know, I know it's, I know it's, it takes a lot to stand up in front of a hundred and forty other people to see how you voted on this, but unfortunately, that's what we have to do in this precinct, because I think it's a very close vote. Okay? So all those in favor, please stand, so we can, and then if anyone doubts the number that's reported as standing, we'll do it again. All those in favor in precinct eight, rise and remain standing, please. Maybe I'll use my eyes here too. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine. Is Mrs. Vis, nine, ten, eleven? Twelve. All right, we're in agreement. Twelve, twelve in favor, twelve in favor. All those, all those opposed in precinct eight, rise and remain standing, please. Twelve and eight. Are you doubting that vote, Mr. Visconti? Let's do it again. Never in thirty-five years have we had to go through this, but hey, there's always a first time. One more time, and this is it. All right? All those in favor, please stand. Okay, let's do that one by one, as you, as you, all right. Mike, Louis, Don, you voting for? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. All right. All those opposed, all those opposed, please stand. All right, there's one over here. One. Sit down. Two. Next, three, four, five, six, seven. Michael, you're seven.
Sit down.
Down. And then eight. Okay, good. At large? Seven in favor, one opposed. Eleven opposed. Eleven in favor, one opposed. It's not even close. One hundred, I have sixty-one.
Eight, nine, nine, eight, nine, eleven, eight, eight.
Eight, eight and one. But that only comes up to sixty-one, doesn't it? Seventeen, twenty, thirty-four, forty-three, fifty-four, sixty-two, seventy, seventy-one. One hundred to seventy-one, I think. Okay. One hundred having voted in the affirmative, seventy-one in the negative. The motion has been carried. Okay. In the future, if you have, if you have an amendment to a motion that you wish to present, you've given some thought, and you want to present an amendment to a motion, I'm available anytime. Give me a call, so I can review it ahead of time, and make, you know, the right decision. I think I made the right decision as far as the amendment to the motion, but just give me a little more time, so I don't have to make it on the spot in consultation with Town Council. So if you've given thought to a motion that you wish to amend, please let me know ahead of time. Okay, next article. Fire Chief Tui. Chief Tui.
Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief, for the first purpose of purchasing a new breathing air compressor, purchasing a new breathing air compressor and fill station.
Motion made, and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief, for the purpose of purchasing a new breathing air compressor and fill station. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any other vote to care to be heard? Chief Tui.
Ladies and gentlemen, what we're looking to do is replace a twenty-three-year-old compressor and fill station. This compressor and fill station is used to replenish the air in the breathing cylinders that the firefighters use when they're entering hazardous environments. Request your support.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief, for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new brush truck.
Motion made, and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of three hundred forty-five thousand dollars, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief, for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new brush truck. A finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Chief Tui.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're looking to replace a twenty-seven-year-old, all-wheel-drive international brush truck. This is our primary vehicle when we go off-road to fight fires deep into the woods. This vehicle is also used during severe weather events like hurricanes and snowstorms, when the roads are nearly impassable. We use this vehicle to get through the tough terrain, to respond to all types of emergencies during those disasters. I request your support.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fifteen. Chairman Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I moved that the town vote to transfer the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars from account number one-four-eight-five-three-zero-zero under Article Four of the May twentieth, twenty-thirteen Annual Town Meeting. Said sum to be transferred to the School Department account number three-hundred-five-three-zero-zero, as voted under Article Four at said town meeting.
Motion made, and second the town vote to transfer the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars from account number one-four-eight-fifty-three-hundred, as voted under Article Four of the May twentieth, two thousand thirteen Annual Town Meeting. Said sum to be transferred to the School Department account number three-hundred-fifty-three-hundred, as voted under Article Four at said town meeting. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Board of Selectmen is three-zero in support. Chairman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is not a request for additional funds, it's simply a transfer from one account to the other. The decision to share the information technology position between the School Department and general government necessitates this request, with general government responsible for forty percent of that, that person's salary, and the balance of the account being paid for by the School Department. I'd urge your support for this. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article sixteen. Trini Murray.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized by the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of retaining consultants and other expert services to evaluate the possibility of the Town of Milford acquiring the Milford Water Company.
Motion made, and second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized by the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of retaining consultants and other expert services to evaluate the possibility of the Town of Milford acquiring the Milford Water Company. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Trini Murray.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, let me first say what this article is not. It is not a message from the Board of Selectmen that the Town of Milford ought to buy the Milford Water Company. It is not a message from the people of the Town of Milford that the town ought to buy the Milford Water Company. What this is, is a request for information. We are coming off probably an unprecedented rate case, lasting the better part of a year, which uncovered a tremendous amount of information about the financial workings and operations of the water company, information quite frankly, that we've never had in the past. The question now is, does this town want to take advantage of that information, hire an appropriate expert, an appraiser, to evaluate that information, and to come forth with a recommendation or an opinion as to whether or not it is feasible or practical for the town to eventually purchase the water company? There's no question, ladies and gentlemen, that many people in the town have strong opinions on this issue. Yes, we ought to buy it. No, leave them alone, it's a private sector. What all of the opinions lack is information. And if there's one thing that this board and this body can do for the town, it is allow them to make informed decisions. So the process roughly would be that if this article were to pass, consultants would be retained, including an appraiser. There would be a full evaluation of the financial information that the water company has, and information would come back, recommendations would go forth. Before any action took place to take an additional step, i.e. to purchase the water company, it would have to be a separate article before this body, with a two-thirds vote, to approve the process going forward. At that time, there would be sufficient information so that all of us could make an informed decision. The idea behind this is that the water rate is a certain number, and within that number of revenue that the water company gets, they need to pay their operational bills, but they also pay state taxes, they pay federal taxes, they give money back to their investors, they are a private corporation, and there are other private expenses that they have that the Town of Milford would not have. The idea, ladies and gentlemen, is that it could potentially be an expense-neutral transaction. Yes, the town would have to borrow money to purchase the company and pay back the bond, pay back the interest on that bond, but without the expenses that a private company has, the town would be able to utilize the, the existing rates and pay back that bond without any additional expense to the taxpayer. That's the thought. What we need is an expert analysis to evaluate the financials of the company, to see what a purchase price might be, so that then we could go forward and have a discussion to see whether or not that's feasible. So right now, it's simply a request for information, to look into this process, to see if the numbers work, so that at some point, the town could take an additional step. And there is a similarity here with our own sewer department. That's a municipally-run organization. The rates haven't gone up in the sewer department, I think, for five years now. So it can be done. It is feasible. We ought to look at it, we ought to debate it, we ought to make a decision, but we ought to have good information. This article will provide us that.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Costantino.
Whether you people know or not, we made a lot of mistakes in that area. We would allow people to build on our water area, right, and put buildings and stuff there. And I've spoke to the water company people before, and they never came forward, that there's a project going there. On that thing, I've walked that. There's a lot of water in that area, all around there. You got the quarries up on West Street. There's plenty of water in Milford. They've allowed people to build where their places are, and now they want to do an evaluation on that? I think it's ridiculous. I think that's really ridiculous. Spending money, you can get it without that. I wouldn't vote for it.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Yes, Mr. Nero.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Murray made a convincing presentation, and I'm almost tempted, except that it was easy to sit down this morning and go through the general information that most of us know about the Milford Water Company, and the, the amount of money that it would cost to acquire the water company. It would seem to me that we would be better served, rather than spend a hundred thousand dollars to find out it's a hundred million dollar cost. If we simply asked the Finance Committee to come back in the spring session, by taking the information that Mr. Murray alludes to, it's very simple. We have a twenty million dollar new plant, we have probably a twenty million dollar old plant, we have wells, we have water rights, we have Echo Lake and the pipe that leads miles from Echo Lake. We have a hundred miles of, of our water line in our town streets. These are all definable. It costs fifty dollars a, a foot to, to put in a water line. We know how many feet in a mile, at least we used to, something like fifty-two-hundred. And if you multiply it all out for exactly zero, you can find out from these guys what the ballpark figure is. My ballpark figure was a hundred million dollars. So I ask you, if it's a hundred million dollars, would you be interested in buying the water company? If it's twenty million, certainly I would. If it's a hundred million dollars, would you? And I'm suggesting that for no cost, these geniuses over here on my right could take the fifty-two-hundred feet a mile times a hundred miles, and they could give us that figure probably in an hour or two. So I ask you to please vote against this article, and ask these fellows to come back in the springtime at no cost, and give us a ballpark figure. Ten million here or there, who cares, right? But if it's a hundred million dollars, and that's the figure I came up with, it's really foolish to spend a hundred thousand dollars to find out that it's out of our reach. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Semino.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I don't like being up here to say what I have to say, because it isn't very often that I go against the Finance Committee or anything. But I think you better take this very, very seriously. It's only a hundred thousand dollars. That doesn't bother me as much as what it's going to cost us down the road. We were... We went through this. I tell you, I've been around 48 years. I was here when Mr. DeCapua asked us to buy it, and it seemed pretty good then, but we didn't. We did it again a second time, and we didn't. I'm going to tell you what you're going to get for $100,000 for nothing. What you're going to get is a price from the water company that's not going to be set by anybody but the DPU. What you're going to get if you buy the water company is you're going to answer to the state and the DPU. If you make a mistake and you get fined, we're going to get fined. I don't know why we want to own the water company. Yes, we had a problem, maybe one problem in 25 years, okay? What I'm saying to you, ladies and gentlemen, is that the consultant will come in here, and what scares me is you're not going to know about Water Street, that's not a pun intended either, Main Street, 100-year-old pipes are going to start cracking. You know who's going to pay for that? You and I. If we're in a hurry to buy the water company, and I think it's a mistake, I would ask you, wait, if the casino comes in, let Washington pay for it, not the taxpayer. We haven't got that kind of money. We're in a recession, ladies and gentlemen. It's a slow process coming back. You'll be paying for the water company, $40 million for the school. I don't see anybody coming home from Draper's and anyplace else with jobs. Be careful, ladies and gentlemen, be careful. What's down the road is going to hurt us terribly.
Chairman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. What we're looking for here, and the Board of Selectmen had voted on this to take this forward, is more than ballpark information. We're looking for detailed information. And I know these guys to my right are smart, I don't know about geniuses, but they're smart folks. They voted in favor to support this as well. Let me just knock down one piece of the previous speaker's comment. If a 100-year-old pipe breaks underneath the ground, you pay for it anyway, whether you pay for it in your water rates or whether the town owns it. This is not a vote, as Selectman Murray so aptly stated, this is not a vote to purchase the water company. This is a vote to give you information and to give our town information. It's a vote to decide whether we should have control of the water company and whether we can afford it first. I'm sorry, it's not a vote to decide whether we should own the water company, it's a vote to decide whether we can afford it and what that cost would be. When we talk about the DEP and the DPU taking control over things, they already do that. They do it with the sewer department, and the sewer department is running very well. So no matter what costs come up for the Milford Water Company, you're going to see that bill, that's a direct pass-through to everybody who opens a tap of water, to anybody that drinks any of that water. So there's no hidden cost here, there's no surprises to us. This is simply $100,000 to look at, and granted, it's some money, but to look at whether it's possible. Thank you very much.
Any other vote okay to be heard? Voter in Precinct Three. I know who you are, Mr. Absalom.
Hi, Russ Abissala from Precinct Three. Wrong, Mike? Right, Mike? Okay. Thank you. Russ Abissala from Precinct Three. A couple of the other costs that you have to think about are the amount of taxes that the water company will not be paying if the town took this over. Right now, they're paying taxes to the town. Also, if we took the water company over, we would end up paying for the pensions for all those employees. That's a long-term cost that's never going to end. Right now, the private water company is paying for that. I think we need more information. As I've read in the paper, the DPU, or I don't know the acronym, is going to actually make the final decision on how much is going to be the purchase price if we go through with this. It's, the study may be useful, and it may be worthwhile to find out what we're going to do, but you also have to think of those other long-term costs, the reduced taxes coming into the town paid by the water company, and the pension benefits that we will be responsible for in the long term. Thank you.
Any other vote okay to be heard? Please identify yourself.
Taryn Barlow, Precinct One. What I get from the conversation is this is strictly a timing issue, it's kind of a bang for your buck. They already have a lot of information because of all the work that's been done. So if we ask for this to be assessed in a few years, we're backtracking on information we seem to already have in our hands. So you're taking the same amount of money and getting better use for it, because we already have some of it. It's one of those things, the water company has, it's a tough situation, because there's a lot of faith issue. So as everybody has reminded us, this is not a vote to see if we should buy it. However, as a person that has a young child, I have already invested so much money in filtration for my house, because I no longer trust the system. So it's a process of whether you want to investigate if this is feasible. If you question your water at all, shouldn't we question whether this is worthwhile? It's kind of one of those things, we are truly would be getting a bang for our buck. That's how I feel. I strongly urge you to vote for this. Thank you.
Any other vote okay to be heard? Mr. Duluzio.
Mr. Moderator, I agree that this is an opportunity to get information so we can deliberate once again whether or not it's a worthwhile venture to proceed. But unless I'm missing something, through our water bill, mine and yours, we pay for the water company's pension, we pay for their real estate tax, we pay for their profit, we pay for their overhead, we pay for all of their expenses, so the fact that the town takes over the water company, we don't really lose that money, we're paying that money, it just comes back to the town.
Any other vote okay to be heard? Mr. Correa.
Al Correa, Precinct Five. Kills me to think we're going to spend 100 grand for information. It bothers me to spend $100,000 for information, but what scares me more is I'm hearing numbers like, "It's 100 million." "It's a billion." Guys, this is serious. I don't like spending any money unless I have to. Anybody who knows me knows that. But right now, if we really want to know the information, I sit with these guys. They're smart people, but you don't take on something like this, part-time, and speculate. It's a dollar, it's a billion. If we want to know, and it kills me, it's a lot of money, but you know something? This time it's worth it. I really believe if we really want to understand the facts, they just went through this rate increase. And anybody seen their water bill lately? Okay? Four years ago, it hurt, now it's absolutely painful. And they're right. Don't kid yourself. Something goes wrong, we pay for it, maybe six months later, but we pay for it with an uptick, because they have shareholders. Those shareholders want their money. They have other expenses that they have to deal with as a company. This is a unique time that they open their kimona for the state, and we can really get some good numbers. We can spend the same money in a few years, but we won't get the in-depth view that we get now. I was torn, but after listening to numbers being thrown around, 100 grand sounds like a lot, but when you throw around 100 million versus something else, that scares the heck out of me. I like having an informed opinion. This one seems like it's worth spending so we know what our options really are.
Jerry Hyatt, Precinct Three, member of the Finance Committee for several years. I hesitated about rising, but I'm genuinely very concerned about this article. I'm going to call it one of the more important issues on tonight's town meeting. I'm going to call it one of the more important issues on the floor for tonight's town meeting. Please don't sit on your hands on this one. This is a quality-of-life issue for the Town of Milford, is the way I see it. This gets to be right up next to number one, because if we don't have clean, dependable water supply that we can depend on every day of our lives, when we go to that faucet and turn it on, without a doubt, then we don't, doesn't matter how much money it costs, doesn't matter how many casinos you have, doesn't matter how many school buildings you have, youth centers, if you can't turn on the water supply and genuinely feel confident that it is clean H2O with nothing else in it, then the quality of life here in Milford is at risk. I'm going to revert back to what Mr. Murray said. This is not an issue about what we are going to do to buy the water company. This is $100,000. I think it's a bang for our buck, like when we look at money we spent, to find out what we can do if we have the right information. All the speakers have failed to do one thing, to mention to you your responsibility as town meeting member. Mr. Moody brought it to my attention one day. He says you've got to read the water rate decision. You must read the water rate decision. Third time, you must get it offline, the town's website, and read it. It is absolutely unbelievable what you're about to read. You will become much more informed, and we won't have this misinformation that Mr. Correa, colleague of mine of the Finance Committee, got up here and talked about. The 100 million, the 1 billion. When you start looking at the information in the water rate decision, it'll all become very crystal clear as to which way we need to go. I urge you, go home, download it. It's 300-plus pages long, okay? Don't try to download and print it out, it'll cost you dearly. Learn how to read it on a computer. If you need help, go to the library. Mr. Burns will be more than happy to help show you how to do it. Read it. It's fascinating. It's unbelievable what's in there. I just strongly urge you to support this, and when you leave here tonight, go home and make sure you read the rate decision. It's invaluable information.
Any other vote okay to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Viscanti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Viscanti from Precinct Eight. One of the previous speakers talked about the, the, um, okay, I'm sorry, talked about dealing with ballpark numbers. We've dealt with ballpark numbers many times in the past. One most recent time is involving, or was involving, the Taj Mahal of toilet rooms at the high school, where we were given supposedly firm numbers as to what it was going to cost three years ago. Apparently, those were not firm numbers, those were ballpark numbers, because every year since, we have been asked for another few hundred thousand dollars to finish this Taj Mahal of toilet rooms at the high school. So I'm not going to suggest that you vote for or against this. I'd like you to draw your own conclusions. Thank you very much.
Any other vote okay to be heard? Motion made to move the previous question, attempt to shut off debate requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the previous question will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct One.
Sixteen in favor, three opposed.
Precinct One reports sixteen in favor, three opposed. Precinct Two. I'm sorry, Joe, once again? Precinct Two reports fifteen in favor and not opposed. Precinct Three. Precinct Three reports nineteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct Four. Precinct Four reports nineteen in favor and not opposed. Precinct Five.
Seventeen in favor, two opposed.
Precinct Five reports seventeen in favor, two opposed. Precinct Six.
Twenty in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct Six reports twenty in favor, zero opposed. Precinct Seven. Precinct Seven reports twenty-four in favor, zero opposed. Precinct Eight. Precinct Eight reports eighteen in favor and not opposed. At large? Two opposed? Precinct Eight, eighteen in favor, two opposed. At large? At large, I'm ready. At large reports thirteen in favor and not opposed. 161 having voted in affirmative, eight in the negative, the motion to move the previous question has the necessary two-thirds. The question now comes upon the motion that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $100,000, said some to be utilized by the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of retaining consultants and other expert services to evaluate the possibility of the Town of Milford acquiring the Milford Water Company. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article 17. Chairman Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I vote that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to amend their agreement with Infinity Project Company for a net metering credit in relation to a solar-electric generating facility, so that the said agreement, now for a term of five years, may be extended to a term of 20.
Motion made and seconded the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to amend their agreement with Infinity Project Company for net metering credit in relation to a solar-electric generating facility, so that the said agreement, now for a term of five years, may be extended for a full term of 20 years. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The Board of Selectmen is three-zero in support. Chairman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, the Board of Selectmen have signed two net metering contracts for five years with Infinity Projects to purchase net metering credits. Net metering credits is a term of art used by the state to credit solar facilities. It's part of the Board of Selectmen's desire to take advantage of those net metering tax credits. And to date, the first-year savings of the town is $266,000. The savings over 20 years is projected at $9.4 million. This article seeks to amend that agreement, because it requires town meeting approval to go to 20 years. And it will credit the account when the generator generates more than what's required by the town, and it will use additional power when the town requires it. That's the whole benefit and the whole net metering concept. And again, this is solar-powered and not fossil fuel, and it's our hope that the town take this opportunity and utilize less of those fossil fuels and broaden our portfolio by using some solar as well. I urge your support for this. Thank you.
Any other vote okay to be heard? Mr. Tien.
Town meeting members, my name is John Tien, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Five. I'm also the chair of Milford's Renewable Energy Advisory Committee. It was my committee that brought this contract to the attention of the Board of Selectmen. I'm very proud of my committee with the work that we've done. We've managed to secure some additional protections for the taxpayers, such that we will never be in a situation where we're paying more for any net metering credit agreements than what we are paying to the supplier for those credits. So this is an excellent contract, as Attorney Buckley said, $9.4 million in slated savings over 20 years, in concert with... Uh, in concert with the other contract like this that we signed last spring, it gives us thirteen million dollars in savings over twenty years. Uh, I urge your support for this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Articles, Article, uh, eighteen. Mr. Chris Foley.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the highway severe for the purpose of purchasing a new street sweeper.
Motion made in second the town vote to raise an appropriate sum of money in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the highway severe for the purpose of purchasing a new street sweeper. Uh, Finance Committee, recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Um, any vote to care to be heard, Mr. Chris Foley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, the street sweeper we're replacing is a nineteen ninety-seven. As you know, we replaced another one two years ago, and their life expectancy is twelve years. This is now fourteen years old. Um, it has a blown transmission, would be cost prohibitive to perform any kind of repair on it this time, you know, due to its age. Uh, it's imperative that we replace this machine for the purpose of stormwater management compliance in the street, clean streets in the town of Milford. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article nineteen. Fire Chief Tuohy.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief for the purpose of purchasing a new four-wheel drive pickup with snowplow.
Motion made in second the town vote to raise an appropriate sum of money in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief for the purpose of purchasing a new four-wheel drive pickup with snowplow. Finance Committee, recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard, Chief Tuohy?
Ladies and gentlemen, this project will replace a nineteen ninety-four Ford F-350 sn-, uh, pickup with a snowplow. We use the vehicle to clear snow at both of the fire stations and after the storms to clear snow from the hydrants. In addition, the vehicle is used to transport equipment to and from, uh, fire scenes. I request your support.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty. Chief Lawflin.
Chief?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the police chief for the replacement of computers and related equipment at the police department.
Motion made in second the town vote to raise and appropriate sum of money in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the police chief for the replacement of computers and related equipment at the police department. Finance Committee, recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard, chief?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, uh, this is a four-year project, so we're trying to spread it out. If you remember back in the, uh, early two thousands, two thousand three, four, we replaced the entire system, so we're trying to spread it. We have been bumped back over several years, uh, in the capital because other, more pressing needs, uh, were in other agencies. At present, thirty-six percent of the desktop computers at the police department are ten years plus. Uh, seventy percent are seven years plus. It relates to the, uh, laptops utilized by detectives and administrators, seventy percent of them are seven years old or more. Uh, the printers, they're running, uh, twenty-one percent are ten years plus and thirty-one percent are seven years plus. So they're, they're reaching their age, a number of them are failing, and we're moving equipment around as best we can to keep the system running. Uh, we also have to increase our capacity to maintain information. Uh, we keep our records, you know, pursuant to the statutes, as well as, uh, in working with, uh, our legal counsel, uh, we're maintaining more and more video data from, for instance, in the cell block area. At present, we can keep eleven months, and the suggestion in talking with, uh, Council Moody is that we keep three years, uh, whenever we have a prisoner in those cells for liability reasons, so if someone comes and challenges us. Uh, and that takes, uh, a larger capacity to save that kind of data. I would urge your, uh, support. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-one. Mr. Lukini.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Vernon Grove Cemetery Trustees, to be utilized for the purchase of a zero-turn mower.
Is, uh, zero, was the word after zero?
Yeah, there was a misprint. It's supposed to say zero-turn mower.
Turn? T-U-R-N?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, motion made in second that the town, um, vote to raise an appropriate sum of money in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Vernon Grove Cemetery Trustees, to be utilized for the purchase of a zero-turn mower. Finance Committee, recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Jamie?
Ladies and gentle, gentlemen, this article from the trustees of Vernon Grove Cemetery is simply looking for funds to replace a seventeen-year-old tractor that is no longer usable in the day-to-day operations at the cemetery. It is beginning to frequently break down and parts are no longer readily available due to the age of the machine. I strongly urge your support and voting to pass this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-two. Attorney Murray.
I move we pass over Article twenty-two.
Motion been made in second we pass over Article twenty-two. A motion to pass over is an attempt to take no action on the article that was submitted in the warrant. It's debatable, and I'll ask if any vote to care to be heard. Attorney Murray?
Uh, thank you. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, the intent of this article, uh, on behalf of the Amory Renovation Committee, was to, um, take, uh, uh, s- some funds now, approximately nine hundred thousand dollars, appropriated towards the eventual renovation of the, uh, youth center in anticipation of construction costs next year, um, in an, in an attempt to reduce the amount of borrowing that the town might have to do to do this project, and of course, save the town money by not paying interest on that, um, borrowed amount. The Amory Renovation Committee has just entered into a contract with an architect. Uh, the firm is, is starting the work on evaluating what needs to be done there, and we would anticipate coming before, uh, this body again next year, uh, hopefully with an article seeking funding, uh, for construction. When we presented this to the Finance Committee, they were in favor of the concept, and, um, they preferred that the, uh, funds, uh, again, approximately nine hundred thousand dollars, be, uh, placed with Article twenty-five as opposed to this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard in the motion to pass over Article twenty-two? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article twenty-two. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article twenty-two is passed over. Article twenty-three. Mr. Moderator? Uh, Selectman, Debo Tolomeis.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, said some to be utilized for the establishment of an information technology department for the town to include salaries and expenses.
Motion made in second the town vote to raise an appropriate sum of money in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, said some to be utilized for the establishment of an information technology department for the town to include salaries and expenses. Uh, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Does any vote to care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, Mr. Valani.
Attorney Valani would like permission to address the body.
Richard Valani. Yes, Richard.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this article seeks to establish an information technology department and to fund the department in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Presently, the town has one person servicing all our technology needs, including the schools and town buildings. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have recognized the need that we need to fully invest in technology for the town. In fact, the Board of Selectmen have authorized a full IT consultant report to be prepared. We have hired such a company. This will provide us an updated inventory on our, all our hardware, software, servers, and related equipment. This article, I believe, is the initial step in establishing a first-rate informational technology department for the town of Milford. This will enable us to properly staff such a department and also to properly provide equipment that we need. I have since learned as part of our report that our servers, for example, in Town Hall are well over ten years old. The next step, uh, we would be looking to establish, once the, a department is established, is to establish a full budget. That can be done in May. I think the town clearly needs to upgrade its technology, and it is long overdue. I would urge you to vote to approve this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard in the motion? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article twenty-four. Chief Tuohy.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Chapter Forty, Section Thirteen D of the General Laws, in order to establish a reserve fund for future payments of accrued liabilities for compensated absences due to employees, uh, due any employee of the fire department or police department upon termination of employee's employment, and further that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to be utilized as such a reserve fund.
Motion made in second the town vote to accept the provisions of Chapter Forty, Section Thirteen D of the General Laws, in order to establish a reserve fund for future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences due an employee of the fire department or police department upon termination of the employee's employment, and further that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to be utilized as such a reserve fund. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Chief Tuohy?
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, within the police and fire contracts, uh, the firefighters and police officers have, uh, sick lea- sick leave buyback. Uh, when they retire, we're required to pay them for their unused sick time at a, at a prescribed rate that's col- in the collective bargaining agreement. Right now, that amount is not within our annual budget, so each year when someone retires, we need to try to find that monies within our operating budget, which causes us, or at least within the fire department, to hold open positions for a number of months until we can recoup those funds throughout the regular, uh, budget. Uh, that leaves us short-staffed. Uh, we rely heavily upon off-duty response in the fire department. By establishing this reserve fund, it allows us to utilize these monies to pay those liabilities for the sick leave buyback, thereby not utilizing funds within the regular operating budget, which would allow us to fill those vacant positions sooner.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-five. Mr. Shane.
Ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate sum of money in the amount of one million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, said some to be added to the capital projects stabilization account established on General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five B.
Motion made in second the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, said some to be added to the capital projects stabilization account established on the General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Five B. Finance Committee, recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Chairman Shane?
Ladies and gentlemen, we established this stabilization account last year. We, we put five hundred thousand into it at that time. Um, this will bring it to two million and change, uh, in preparation for future short-term capital projects. As I said earlier, uh, like the, uh, Fire Chief's million-dollar truck, the, uh, youth center, uh, it will reduce the borrowing needs, and we'll continue to put money into it as we go forward and look at our five-year capital plan. I urge you to vote for this.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion which requires a two-thirds vote to transfer money into a stabiliz- a stabilization account. Uh, since no one spoke in opposition, I will, uh, take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. By taking the voice vote, I'm not encouraging you to vote for it. If you feel you want to vote against it, you can, and we just take a standing vote. So all those in favor of, um, the motion as presented, manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, moderator, town meeting members, I move the town vote to raise an appropriate sum of money in the amount of one million dollars, said some to be added to the town stabilization fund established pursuant to General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five.
Motion made in second the town vote to raise an appropriate sum of money in the amount of one million dollars, said some to be added to the town stabilization fund established pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Five B. Finance Committee, recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Shane?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is the stabilization account that we use for long-term debt. Presently, there's about eleven million dollars in there, and this will bring it over twelve. Uh, we will be using this money to offset the, uh, debt limit, which the Finance Committee has set at three million dollars a year out of the operational budget, to pay for the overage for the school, which will come in around thirty, thirty-five million on the debt schedule. So this money is definitely needed. I urge you to vote for it.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, uh, to raise an appropriate the sum of money, uh, of one million dollars to be added to the stabilization fund. Again, it requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I move-
I hit the button, I'm sorry.
I'll do it again. I moved that the town vote to transfer some of money in the amount of one million dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized to offset the operating capital and debt expenses to fix the tax rate for fiscal two thousand fourteen.
Motion made in second the town vote to transfer a sum of money in the amount of one million dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized to offset operating capital and debt expenses to fix the tax rate for fiscal year two thousand fourteen. Finance Committee, recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Shane?
Mr. Moderator, um, this money is to, as it says, to offset the tax rate. We, um, will continue to offset the tax rate with as much as we can. This year, it's a million, last year it was a million, so every little bit helps, and we urge that we, you vote for it.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Mr. D'Antonio. Motion made in second we dissolve the warrant. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Monitors, please bring forward your attendance sheets.